Call this meeting to order, please rise for the pleasurable reasons. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, on the ground, individual with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, this is the Porter County Board of Commissioners meeting, it's Tuesday, May 17th, 2022. It's about seven, eight minutes past 10 o'clock, so we're going to move right into our agenda here. We have a consent agenda, Melanie?
Approval of payroll, April 29th, May 13th, May 27th of 2022. Approval of claims, April 21st, May 5th, May 12th, 2022. Approval of minutes for April 19th, 2022. Ways and measures, monthly report, March 16th to April 15th, 2022 filed.
Venue rental agreement, we have a Joseph Gianati, I just saved you the-
Yeah, thank you.
For venue rental agreement, and that's all under the consent agenda, I'll throw it to the floor for action.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Sorry, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, we have an announcement. Jeff Imhoff has been named Director of the Porter County Veterans Office. Jeff, do you want to come up here, just say a few words, introduce yourself to the public? You probably weren't expecting that, were you?
No, I didn't have anything for-
Welcome to county government.
Yeah, I'm just glad that the Commissioner's got my appointment downstairs to be the Director. I look forward to trying to develop an office and potentially be the standard for the rest of the counties in Indiana and following. So, thank you guys, and we have a long career here.
We provide a very important function for the county, you're that link between us and the veterans, so Godspeed and good luck with that department, good luck. Next up, we, under Commissioners Business, number one, we have an, the first one on this appointment, we are going to defer to the next meeting. We got a couple of applications in late, and we want to be able to take them and look them over. Our next meeting's June 7th, so we'll appoint at the June 7th meeting. It's only for a board position, it's a Democrat affiliation board position for the Plan Commission, and we'll be doing that at the next meeting. Next up, we have, we are going to be accepting applications to appoint a citizen to the Board of Trustees Porter County Public Library System. The deadline will be June 2nd, 2022. So, we are now accepting applications to appoint a citizen to the Board of Trustees Porter County Library System. There's no political affiliation to that or anything, I don't believe.
I don't think so, our current appointment is Stu Summers.
Yeah, our current appointment is Stu Summers, and he's going to be moving up then, right?
No, I think he's reappointed, or re, he'd like to be reappointed.
Okay, but that's not for this appointment, is it?
Yeah.
Oh, it is, okay, all right.
Are you sure, Laura? I thought it was not.
I'm not sure, but we're not doing anything at this moment.
So, we're accepting applications.
I thought I was sure.
Yeah.
You're giving me questions.
The reason I say, as I received, I thought you two did as well, an email from Stu asking for us to reappoint who's ever up right now. It wasn't him, I don't have the email in front of me, but-
Okay.
Okay, well, we'll figure that out, but in the meantime, we're going to apply, or we're going to open up, accepting applications up till June 2nd for that Porter County Library System seat.
It's, well, I got an email this morning from Stu that he wanted to be reappointed himself.
Yeah.
But whatever, we'll do it next.
We're accepting applications. Okay? We're accepting applications.
Regardless.
Starting today. All right, next up, we're going to be accepting applications to appoint a citizen to the Convention, Recreation, and Visitors Commission. The appointee will complete the term of Harry Peterson, which ends December 31st, 2022. So, this board position will take over once appointed till the end of this year, and then that seat would have to be reappointed again, because it's filling a vacancy. Next up, we have accepting applications, we're also accepting applications to appoint citizen to the Alcohol Beverage Commission, must be of a Republican affiliation, and the appointee will complete the term of Jason Dilliana, which ends December 31st, 2022. And Jason Dilliana became a governor's appointment to the RDA, TOD Development Infrastructure Committee from the governor, so then he cannot serve on two lucrative positions, so he has to step down. So, we're now accepting applications for that position there that's been vacated. Next up, we have an employee request for insurance coverage.
Yeah, pursuant to our handbook, if a retiree qualifies under all of the state statutes, for our retiree insurance, they have to make a formal request to the Commissioners, and that has been made through the HR Department, and all of the qualifications have been reviewed, and this individual does comply with all of those.
Is that COBRA?
It's not COBRA, but it, the same rate is utilized for the retiree insurance as COBRA.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for employees' requests for insurance coverage, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, we have Jan Pierce from Pierce Healthcare Group is going to be giving a mental health survey presentation. So, if we could have her come forward, welcome.
Thank you, appreciate the opportunity to be here today to present the results of an assessment that we did for the community. First, I just would like to start out and thank the county for the opportunity to provide this and commend the county for your leadership in taking these steps to conduct a community assessment on suicide awareness and prevention. As we know, there's, has been growing concern in our country in this area, and I appreciate your interest and commitment to this area as a county. I'd also like to thank, there's a number of people here in the audience who participated in the assessment and the interview process, and I want to recognize and thank all of them as well. Obviously, an initiative of this nature does its best by having as much participation as possible, and I appreciate the folks who did support us in here and who have come today to hear the presentation. So, we began this assessment in November 2021 and completed it in May. We have, the full report is 40 pages, I will today be going over a PowerPoint summary of a key, some key national issues, the findings, and the recommendations to go over with you today. So, this is the executive summary of the full report. This is the team that worked on the report. With me today, Anne Schreiner, our Senior Clinical Consultant, who has a Master's in Social Work and has worked as a CEO of a large community mental health center, social service agency, has extensive experience. My background is both in social work and in business with an MBA and MSW, so I kind of approach this from both lenses, both looking at strategic planning as well as good clinical care. Also working on the project is Mimi Scapek, who is our Analytics Person. So, the methodology, a big part of this, our approach is to do qualitative research by engaging key individuals as participants who are stakeholders in a number of different areas. So, we did 38 interviews with individuals representing agencies, law enforcement, schools, criminal justice, the recovery community, state agencies, and local government. We also took a look at trends, obviously working on qualitative and quantitative factors, both from the coroner's office here, the CDC, as it has breakouts for the state and for Porter County, as well as other databases. And then we looked at some of the key research studies, really looking at this field of suicide awareness and prevention is evolving, and really wanting to be sure our approach is using the best research findings. And there were two kind of significant research studies that were just published in January, and those are, some highlights from those are included in here, because I think they have a lot of relevance for the framework on suicide awareness and prevention. I should also mention, and I know, I think the agenda says mental health survey, I mean, obviously, suicide awareness and prevention has links to both mental health, mental illness, as well as substance abuse, but the focus of this study was specifically on suicide awareness and prevention. And certainly, we will touch on many of those interfaces in the mental health and substance abuse arenas. So, a couple of key trends, just to set the umbrella framework for what's happening in this country in terms of suicide. Suicide rate in 2020 in the U.S., 13.48 per 100,000 individuals. Couple trends, highest in middle-aged white men, on average, 130 suicides a day. It gives you a few other here in the bullet points, I think everybody can see the PowerPoint here. Rural counties being hit particularly hard. And I think what's most important on this PowerPoint slide is the last bullet here, that suicide touches whole communities, and this is again, national CDC trends. Each person who dies by suicide leaves behind 135 people who knew that person, and the impact in suicide and the bereavement that follows. So, this is how it's really developed into a community issue, in addition to the individuals impacted, all the family and other members who are impacted. Here's some quick trends, taking a look at Porter County compared to Indiana and compared to U.S., looking again at this incident level per 100,000 individuals. As you can see, the far, as you're looking at it, the far right, it gives you the Porter County had a spike in 2017, that's come down some, but has, you know, really trended at closer to the Indiana rate, higher than the U.S. rate in terms of suicide death age adjusted per 100,000. And this is kind of, gives you that same data in a graph where you can see that kind of spike. We're starting out 2012, the green, again, being Porter County, kind of higher than state, higher than U.S., and peaking in 2017, coming down a little bit closer still, somewhat higher there in 2020. So, what part of the framework we use for this assessment comes from SAMSS and from the Suicide Prevention Resource Center, and they've provided five guiding principles or pillars for looking at suicide awareness and prevention. Going, starting from the right, one is using evidence-based prevention, and we continue to look in our field for where the research studies, what communities are on there, how do we use best evidence-based practice? And that's still a dynamic process, I mean, research is ongoing as we sit here today. So, you know, that, using research-based approaches is extremely important. Second, kind of going from, to the left, culturally competent approaches. Third, safe and effective messaging and reporting. Fourth, very important partnerships and collaboration. No single organization or entity is going to be able to have full responsibility. There really has to be partnerships and collaboration, and it has to be both from professionals, both mental health professionals, individuals in the substance abuse field, the healthcare field, as well as the community at large, and you'll see some research how there really needs to be a big tent in terms of partnerships. And then last is engaging individuals with lived experiences. The research has shown this is even more important, that individuals who have this experience, that we engage them, there's an initiative in the field now that is percolating in Indiana, described as loss teams. In fact, I think there's some state funding for developing those programs. And again, it's, this is from a national framework, one of the key elements in the process. Two, just research studies that, again, I want to mention, that they both, at the kind of final bullet here, although there's been a growth, if we graph this, in suicide prevention programs nationally, utilization of those programs has not grown at the same level that the programs have. And again, that, the concern there is that at-risk individuals are not always assessing the programs within the formal behavioral health system. So, that's, I think, important for us to think about in how we build community-based programs. Couple of the other research findings, that several factors that they found that contributed to non-use. First and foremost, stigma, which has to be a huge part of addressing that in any awareness and prevention program. Negative, limited access, so of course, how services are accessible to the person that needs them is important, and as well as negative attitudes or negative experiences with the mental health system. So, this is where the authors made a couple of recommendations, too, I think important to us today. One is this idea of peer supporters, which goes back to that kind of loss team idea. The second is taking a public health approach outside of the formal treatment, that we really have to think of suicide awareness and prevention as a public health issue. So, from a public health model, what we would hope to focus on in building the most effective suicide awareness and prevention are four arenas, as in this diagram. The first, if looking at it from the left, would be promotion, or what was the term we use more often as awareness. Then we look at prevention. Then we have treatment, where we actually have an intervention with an individual. And then the fourth area being recovery, where again, we have support for that individual through our support communities for recovery. And I think, you know, many of you may be familiar with that concept from the addiction substance abuse community, and I think that idea of recovery is now being used much more broadly in the whole mental health arena. So, we, I think what the public health model suggests is, although many times we get focused on treatment, which of course is extremely important, somebody that presents, we want to do the absolute best that we can do for that individual, how do we go upstream and do the kind of awareness, promotion, prevention to work with individuals before they get to that point of needing services? So, we need all four of these arenas. So, going into the study here, key findings, again, in, I should really start with saying that the county does have some very good evidence-based programs in awareness and prevention that are currently ongoing. I'll mention a few of them. One is Question, Persuade, and Refer, QPR. Another one is Mental Health First Aid, another one is Sources of Strength. And these are training programs that have involved and occurred in the county with agencies, schools, law enforcement, veteran group, and others, to again, engage. The big, keep thinking of that when you think about what hap, we need to have widespread engagement of individuals, not only in the professional community, but in the community at large. And these training programs are one way to engage individuals. There are several tools that are being used by professionals in the field that have good evidence-based underpinnings, the Columbia Suicide Severity Rating Scale, and the Stanley Brown Safety Planning Intervention. So, I mean, these are all positives that are in place. There's also been some really good initiatives at integrating physical health and mental health, and I think that we have more and more research in the field there. We have our FQHCs offering behavioral health services, Porter Stark exploring being a CCHHC. We have primary care physicians who are reported to use PHQ-2 and PHQ-9 that are screening tools you can use in a primary care visit to identify, you know, if there's depression and some other mental health issues. So, these are all positives. There's also several Porter County Task Force and councils that are very actively involved in suicide awareness and prevention, again, a positive, and I think indicative of the care, concern, compassion of many Porter County community members to get involved in this area and looking for what's the best way to engage. So, as we talked to 38 individuals, and then we asked, where are the gaps and where are the areas, and how can we take this to the next generation, where do we want to go? And there were four key areas that were brought to our attention in the interview. The first is the concern about stigma, and seeing that there's still a significant stigma here pervasive that is a barrier to individuals accessing help. Second concern raised about wait time for initial outpatient behavioral health appointments, and some of the challenges being able to access inpatient care. So, these are, again, if you think of the four elements of our public health perspective, we're in that treatment segment about when we have someone that needs help, how do we get help on a very responsive, very timely basis? Third, our fragmentation of some of the suicide awareness and prevention initiatives, and in part, this is because some of the initiatives have been very much a grassroots effort, so we have several different task forces and entities that are looking at this, several organizations offering services, and a number of the individuals that we interviewed said, you know, they think that there's a little bit of silos going on, and that we're really not using the kind of breadth, the depth of coming together as a community. And again, the positive is it's grassroots or caring, but how do we build this into a stronger system that has some structure so that the right hand knows what the left hand's doing? And then the fourth is behavioral health workforce challenges. I think that this was shared with us, particularly at the licensed staff level, and suggestions made about, you know, initiatives that could be in place where we could build some bridge for unlicensed clinical staff to become licensed staff, to be able to build, you know, and strengthen our workforce.
Yeah, I have a question, I want to interrupt you in your presentation, but-
Yeah, I'm very open to questions always, yeah.
You know, when we had Porter Stark came in here last year, I see you're in the audience today, and the one that sticks out to me that I heard in that presentation was the stigma as a barrier to accessing help. And I was amazed by how many people that had actually prevented suicide, that there wasn't even a sign or anything that happened, and it just seems to me, if it is a stigma, and it's a barrier to accessing help, how do you combat that? Is it PR, is it, because you know, governments aren't real good at doing marketing and-
Right.
Public, you know, outreach, and you know, I just, I'm just wondering, because that seems to me like the road jam in front of everything, that's just my assessment, and I'm, is that-
That, I, it's critically important, and I appreciate you highlighting it, and there's no, I wish there was one answer.
Right.
But it's going to take, moving to that public health approach, getting really focused on that awareness and prevention side, and it's going to take widespread participation. We have to be out there in the churches, we have to be out there in the community groups, we have to make it speakable, and there are, even though there might not be big science and symptoms, we know folks that are too isolated are more at risk. I mean, we're going to, and we can define that and develop a community-based program. You know, getting in, obviously getting into the schools, starting with our children, starting to make it speakable for our children, and you know, I met with a number, both Anne and I met with a number of people from the schools, and I think there's some really good initiatives there, and I think that's a really important place to start, you know, because if you grow up making mental health and substance abuse as so speakable, it's become more a part of your life. Now, the schools have some challenges, as they pointed out, because obviously, there's a privacy element, their role is to be educators, and some families may welcome help, and some families, you know, may say we want to go privately, and that's clearly to be respected and their prerogative. But I think that there's a public health approach early on that we can do. We keep thinking upstream, what can we do before we get to that point?
With all your background and everything, do you think that that would fall under, I mean, I look at an outreach thing, and I don't think that that would fall under our health department, even though it is a health-
Right.
-type issue, because we talk about healthcare a lot in here, but I'm just trying to figure out how, obviously, we got some collaboration to do, I'm hearing that.
Yes.
Between everyone.
Right.
But it's, I'm just trying, I can't get past the stigma thing, that's what I'm trying to, because that seems to me like that's what's going to open up, open up the box.
Right, well, that'll open up the box to help people get help. We got to figure out even earlier, before they need help, what are we doing from a, one, to help reduce at-risk situations, and two, you know, to look at protective elements. What helps people not get to that point?
I guess.
You know, we call them protective factors, and we can look at those protective factors, and there's research and programs out there, you know, that define those. But to your point, the structure is the challenging part. You know, you have a pretty decentralized function, I mean, people in the interviews said to us, well, some of the funding in and of itself creates the fragmentation, because there's a grant for this program, for this entity over here, and you know, then there's an initiative that's funded by the government over here, and they're all separate, you know. But they need, in this realm, they need to be part of a county-wide structure, yes. And you know, there are some states, like Ohio, has county mental health boards, I mean, there's some other structures out there, but you know, big picture, you know, that's something to think about, where is the umbrella going to be? Because otherwise, then we continue to do this good work that I'm describing, but there's still going to be the fragmentation.
Even if you do outreach, then where do they go after the outreach, right?
Right, 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 right. And, and I'll come to this in the findings, and then how do we follow up and look at the outcomes? Because we're going to learn if what we're doing works by having our own kind of outcome monitoring, follow-up system, because it's a dynamic process, and we want to keep making this better. So, we, let's say we identified 20 individuals at risk in a six-month period, where are those individuals in six months, and what kind of interventions? And you know, we have to have our own research project, if you will, because that's how we're going to, and that's going to tie us back to stigma, you know, we're really going to understand where to go with all of that.
And you know, I think in a lot, in a big way, that, you know, dissolving the stigma that is attached to the issue of suicide or mental health, it's not only, you know, a mental health issue, when it really is a disease that attacks the mental health.
Right.
It's a disease like any other disease.
Right, we just don't have what some other diseases like, tell people, I wish it was, I could come here today and say, you know, it's like you broke your arm, we'll put you in a cast in six weeks, we're done, and you know, if you saw, again, those four, the recovery, we really have to support people and think about long-term, lifelong recovery, and that's part of the disease in our sector, the way we have to think about it.
You can continue on, I didn't mean to-
Oh, no, no, I'm happy to answer your question. Okay, so recommendations. So, you introduced this, Commissioner, quite, because my first one is that we need an integrated Porter County Suicide Awareness and Prevention Program, with these are the eight objectives, and this is, I think, could bring together all of the amazing work and take us to the next generation. First, we need to increase the county-wide participation in the training programs with both professionals and the community in large, and set some engagement targets. What percentage of the population do we think should be trained? Over what period of time, how do we set up a schedule, and then how do we work with, you know, churches and other community groups to be able to do that? Second, related to that is, we need a, both a participation level and an outcomes approach for the training programs, so that we can communicate the findings to both program participants and the county at large. We need to learn from what we're doing and be able to track. I tried to pull some data for some of the training programs in place now, but really, was not available information to say, okay, well, these 100 people were trained, and what was the follow-up, and what's the outcome, and what was the utilization of those interventions? We need to be able to do that, and we can do that, I mean, that's possible. Third, we need to strengthen and define collaboration partnerships across organizations and the community at large, integrating in their peer support, and again, the individuals with lived experience. Fourth, we need to look at models and processes to enable more timely access to outpatient behavioral health services, you know, and I know there is some initiatives underway looking, looking at that, you know, there's, you know, living room model, offering groups. We need to know that folks don't feel stuck on a waiting list, just even that terminology to get to therapists, we need to be sure that there's availability of services, and it may be changing some of the models, you know, maybe it's more group than looking at individuals and other types of, the living room is peer support, other ways to be sure people get connected with services on a very, very timely basis. Next, looking at, again, we have to look at engagement, and both, this is the public health model, individual, community, and societal level, we are always looking, some are going to be more short-term, midterm, and long-term, but we need to make that commitment. Next, continue to focus on this community-wide stigma reduction program, and finally, kind of focusing on this integration of physical and mental health. And again, I was very pleased to see the work at FQHC at the health system recognizing it and looking at initiatives- it and looking at initiatives. And, you know, that needs to be under the big tent as well, because again, you know, primary care, we, there's been a number of initiatives in our field. We called collaborative care, came out of the University of Washington, the Ames Model, really showing the benefit of that collaboration, moving mental health identification into primary care offices, again, as very early on identification and awareness. And second recommendation is developing, as I've already talked about, this public health model, so that we focus on awareness, prevention, treatment, and recovery, that we really have all four steps of the process. Three, looking at some type of crisis, 24/7, 365, crisis center where there is a place, I mean, having, I met with the hospitals, I mean, having behavioral health patients in hospital EDs for three days is, you know, not a good place. So we need, we need a place where crisis and acute situations can be managed, as well as navigators. What I heard from many folks is, we don't know where to go to get help. And I had folks, from their heart, share with me lots of case examples. And so this term navigator, you've probably heard, has become more prevalent in all of healthcare, that individuals need navigators. And we really need to be sure we have navigators to facilitate assessments, referrals for acute and crisis situations. And we also have upcoming, you know, the launch, the state launch of 988, that crisis line, and that's, and I had some interaction with a couple of folks from the state, so that will need to be integrated with this as well, what happens with those calls, you know, how do they get triaged? And what services will we have to be able to immediately work with those?
For the benefit of all this, very quickly explain what the 988 program is.
It's going to be like, you can just dial it if you have a suicide thought. And we're going to have immediate attention that the states are rolling out. Now, it's...
Will those calls go to the state?
Well, the state is still working that out. So although they have a July launch date, it's really not going to be fully launched from the information I saw for probably another year or two. They will have designated places where the calls will go into, call centers. I think the information I saw as of last week, they had three call centers preliminarily identified for the state. But it's a separate process than going through the community mental health centers. So that's where, again, so we don't end up with fragmentation here, we're going to need to get into that. And it may very well be that Porter Stark is already doing that. You know, I haven't had more recently that discussion. But we need to be aware, and we don't, you know, we don't want that to be another fragmentation of an initiative that's not integrated into the county.
They're shaking their head, yes, so I...
You're in it? Good, yeah.
And we're part of the team.
Right, yeah. I looked at all the task forces, I did see, they had three locations where they were saying for call center. Not one here.
Yeah.
Well, that's what, yeah, I talked to Chris very soon.
July, you're going to get connected with me, get some help.
Right, right. Yeah. We just, if we're looking at a crisis center here, we got, it's got all the high calls coming in there, so that, you know, we don't end up with fragmentation with state initiatives. Yeah, good, yeah. Fourth, the developing a suicide awareness and prevention peer support program, again, there's, and there's, I think, state funding to develop that, that's out there right now, another great initiative. And five, again, we need an evaluation and outcome structure, because that's another way to tie the different initiatives. I mean, so how many people were trained in QPR? How many were trained in mental health first aid? What do we know about six months later, three months later? How many interventions occurred as a result of that? What were the results of those interventions? I don't think that that's, that's difficult to do, but I think, and we will learn so much from that, that we'll be able to build the next generation program. So next steps, you know, I will say that we had great participation in this process and probably to one, everybody that participated wanted to know if they could get information about the results of the assessment. So I told them I would pass that on to you, that they, you know, would very much like to see how they could, the findings and recommendations could be shared with participants. And the second is, obviously, as a consultant, you know, we bring findings and recommendations, and then the question is, where does it go, next steps? And, you know, I always highly recommend that we need an implementation plan with specific timeframes, because often you have initiatives that are short-term, midterm, long-term, so they need to be sorted out. And then, you know, if you really want to have an action plan, obviously, the recommendations need to be transferred into action with a plan and with quarterly review, just because, again, it's a dynamic process. There could be some new research in the field in suicide that comes up in a year. We want to, you know, we want to be out there. We want it, want Porter County, you know, to really be in its A-game and continuing to be the best of the best in incorporating new information as it comes. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Any further questions before?
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
You know, I noticed our rate's higher than the state and then national average. And do you happen to know, I know this wasn't part of your study, but the surrounding counties, are they also elevated, like Lake and La Porte Counties?
Well, the state is elevated from the national, and Porter County is elevated from both. I don't, it's available. I don't have it.
I just wondered if it's a regional issue.
Yeah, I don't know that. I could, I could find that, yeah. It's, the information's available.
So there was, according to the graph, that there was a surge in 2017.
Yes.
It was quite noticeable.
Was it?
Any idea as to why?
No. I, you know, it wasn't something that I looked into, you know, I don't know. Be interesting to know whether anyone else in the county looked at it at that point, you know, from coroner's office or anybody else.
And are you aware of any communities who attacked this problem and had success? And what kind of things they did?
Well, there's, not in any package way that I could say if you just do A, B, and C, you know. I think, again, it's, you know, given the state system, like for instance in Ohio, Ohio has a mental health boards for a county, so then they have a different kind of org structure. I mean, there are definitely some of the programs that are available. There's, State of Indiana has an anti-stigma campaign that they're rolling out. I mean, there's initiatives out there, but what's not out there are necessarily these integrated county structures. So what's out there are programs. And the issue is then, you know, how do we bring it together?
That's where I see the problem being.
Right.
It's just the, how do you bring it all together? I'm just sitting here thinking about if we were to want to take on something like that within the county, just to connect everybody, just a person to go out and connect everything. We don't really have a department, the other, I guess you could say maybe the health department?
Maybe the closest.
Maybe someone in there could do that? So it would appear to me, based on where we're at with the programs that are out there, we're probably going to have to partner with someone, right? I mean, I mean, I'm just talking out loud.
Well, I mean, even then, it's so different. The way you would approach a sixty-year-old man and a fifteen-year-old girl, I mean, it's, how do you address?
Well, the training programs, so the QPR and the mental health first aid, I mean, they...
They'd be there.
Yeah. They would be the hands-on, for your example of approaching a teenage girl versus a sixty-year-old man and the skills there. You know, the roll-up, the challenges, the roll-up, how do we develop a county-wide structure that's integrated?
Right.
So that, I mean, again, so many folks said to me, you know, we do great work, and the words used were, "We're siloed, we're territorial, we're fragmented." Which, again, I don't want that to sound negative. I mean, I think what it is, is there's a lot of pride in individual organizations doing work. We don't have the bridges and the crossbar.
Well, county government in itself, I mean, we have 28 different units up here, and off that, we have probably another 20 that are just, you know, advisory boards, all kinds of things. And it's just, it becomes cluttered just within the county. So we have problems messaging up here all the time.
Right.
And so that's what this is, right? This is messaging. So that's something that I hope this, for me, the report will start the stimulation. And I also wanted to let you know that once we accept this report on behalf of the commissioners, this becomes a public document. So anybody that wants it, you know, we'll probably put it up on our website.
Okay.
So anybody that wants this thing, once we accept it, this is your, this is the public's document. This isn't just ours. That's how that works. So I just wanted to, that's more for everyone in the audience, to let them know that this information will be available out there. It's the starting point.
Yeah. I mean, there's some emerging community models. There's, you know, this Be Well community that comes, you know, I think we, there's one out in Orange County, California, a couple of other communities looking, you know, other, as you point out, I mean, other communities are facing the same challenge. How do, how do we develop an integrated system? And again, as people in these interviews pointed out, they said, well, how do we do that when the funding and everything, you know, focuses on individual organizations? So how, how does it come together?
Yeah. It's very fragmented. Well, I think we're on the, you know, we, we're on the right path of becoming healthier, you know, as far as, you know, this subject matter goes, in that we're bringing you in, looking at what we're doing, and, you know, making suggestions as to how we can, we can better manage what the problem is. And I agree that, you know, for us to, to prepare ourselves for a next generation, you know, it's a way that we're going to manage this as a, you know, communities, is going to be, it's going to take a government like this one, who's going to take the ball and get it, you know, and get running with it, at least initially, and turn it over to an organization whose staff, you know, that they have the kind of professionals, licensed professionals to deal with this. And it's, like a lot of things, it's probably unfortunately going to, going to take some resources on the county's part to help get that kicked off and, you know, and to make sure that, you know, that a report, a 40-page report like this doesn't go to waste. That, that would be a shame.
Right, I agree.
So...
And again, I'm impressed that we're here having this discussion, and, you know, kudos to all of you at the county level for helping make this speakable. I mean, in stigma, that's the first big step, making this as an issue speakable. I know that sounds simple, but it's important.
It was, you know, was brought to our attention, you know, Redstone, doing the school board member, brought it to my attention. I, I brought it to the commissioners, Commissioner Gooden, Commissioner Blaney, they were, they, you know, kudos to them for understanding that, you know, we need to, we need to take a hard look at this, so. So we have, I think a harder look needs to be looked, you know, taken above and beyond this, and we'll move, we'll move on from there. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Yes. Before we take any, we probably should go ahead and accept it, don't you think, Scott?
Yeah.
Accept the report.
Motion to accept the study.
I thought, no, a second. Yeah, a motion and a second to accept the Pierce Health Group Mental Health Survey on behalf of Porter County Government. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. It is now a public document. So, yeah, Walt, you had something to say?
Extremely agreed. You asked this question about stigma. I used to say that my youngest son committed suicide, and with one counseling session, I learned so much. I said, drop that word. Say your son died of suicide. And it took an enormous burden off me. I felt a lot less blame and a lot less shame. So now I can say my son died of suicide. Doesn't take a 40-page report. If it's been exposed, whether it's to his own family or friends, I would change that one vocabulary word. And to me, it changed the whole process to be in agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you, Walt. Now, back at the business at hand here. Next up, we have two items here. First is Antero Group, and this is a contract to provide engineering services for an Oprah grant that was awarded on behalf of the BLACD. David?
Very briefly, through your sponsorship, the Conservancy District has been awarded, and you have been awarded a grant from the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs to implement a comprehensive stormwater management program in the Black Hawk Beach area on the north side of Flint Lake. These two contracts were solicited through a competitive process, and we are here today needing your approval so we can move forward with both of the projects. The, the first one that's on the list is for engineering services. That had a budget of $75,000, and we were able to consummate an agreement with the engineers for $70,000.
Oh, good.
The second one is for grant administration. The budget was, is $20,000, and the successful provider has agreed to do it for $19. So we stand before you with two under-budget contracts to get started in this process. And we, again, as a Conservancy District, greatly appreciate the commissioners stepping forward. You may remember, this was the third try.
Third try, yeah. We got it the third time.
But the third time was the charm, and we appreciate, we had to go through, as Jeff Pavly knows, that paper trail three different times, which you were always available and accommodating, and it has paid off. Dollar-wise, this is a 300 and, 300, get it upside down here, a $331,000 project. The grant is for $271,000. The $60,000 will be paid by the Conservancy District. There's no money to be expended by, by the county. But this is a win-win. We get some much-needed, I know stormwater drainage is on the top of your guys' lists. This is a project we're getting a grant for, and the Conservancy District is going to pay the local shares. So thank you for working with us on this, and we'd ask for approval this morning of both of these contracts. I, I've reviewed them, I've negotiated them. Most importantly, they comply with the grant regulations, and they also apply, comply with the requirements we place on them in terms of standard conditions and provisions.
So the first one here is for Antero Group. That's the engineering services. So we, we're going to, we're going to vote on these separately. So we need to move on that one. Motion to approve the Antero Group, a contract to provide engineering services for the Oprah grant awarded on behalf of the BLACD.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. Next up is Mendenhall and Associates LLC. This is an agreement to provide admin for the Oprah grants awarded on behalf of the BLACD.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, good luck out there. Next up, Animal Shelter. Tony Bianchi, Director? Got some good news here.
We do.
So first of all, we have, this is somewhat of a, it's clerical, accounting, and an announcement too, probably. So I'll let you give the announcement, Tony.
I'm not sure what announcement I'm supposed to give, but...
The donation fund.
Oh, the donation fund.
That's an announcement to me.
Well, that is a great announcement, yes. Over the last, I'd say, six to eight months, we have received three rather large donations due to being named a beneficiary in some Porter County citizens' wills.
Wow.
We have right now in our donation fund, $1,355,960.
So as you can see on the board, those are the three donations that we received over the last six months. So good news. Congratulations.
Very good news, yes.
Congratulations to the shelter.
Fantastic.
Yep.
Thank you.
We always knew that building a new facility there seven years ago, we would hope that it would eventually start coming to this.
And raise, yes.
And it's good to see. And it's, and it's good to see happen.
Great leadership.
Good to see.
So, we would like to take some of that money.
Yeah.
And use it to, um, uh, shore up our outside kennels. We did it with our main kennels. Darren's been working on this a lot, so I'm gonna let him take the floor here.
Yes, we'd like to appropriate fifty thousand dollars into our building maintenance to take the fencing from a nine-gauge down to a six-gauge, which is a thicker fencing. Uh, we find that our dogs like to chew on the nine-gauge.
What, from day one?
Yes.
From day one?
Uh, I believe the.
It's spent every week, no?
The, the court, I believe, to change everything out, as well as add toppers to the runs, came to a little, oh, under forty-four thousand. Uh, forty-three thousand, four hundred.
And who's, who's the contractor?
It's on the second page.
Who's low bit?
Northwest.
That was northwest Indiana.
Northwest, Indiana, second, oh, here, here.
I believe they did the outside runs.
They did the main runs that we had already done, yes.
So these are in the, are these the runs in the back or the front?
The, well, it'd be the isolation, which is on the front of the building.
Building, right.
And then the small breed and the quarantine, which on the side.
Side, okay. Yeah, I don't, I, the fencing down there has just been from day one, it's just, they've been digging under it, they've been.
The rubber coating on the fence.
I mean.
Makes them want to bite in.
And they're, they're under stress, they're, you know.
Especially on forty-nine.
Yeah, and we did just have an escape last week.
Okay, so it started.
Spring is here.
Spring is here, yeah, the warm weather, they want to get out too. Tony, Darren, are those runs long enough?
Yes.
I, I would say they're adequate for the dogs, yes.
Uh, gives them enough room to get out and move around, but, you know, not too much running space so they can get a good jump over the fence.
Jump over the top.
Exactly.
Because some of those dogs are pretty athletic.
We have some very agile dogs.
Yeah. You put me in here, I'll jump over.
That, I gotta see.
They get close to dinner, they're jumping over, they don't.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve some refencing out at the animal shelter for forty-three thousand.
Forty-four.
Forty-four thousand dollars to Northwest Indiana fence. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. This is great news and congratulations for all the work you guys are doing out there. That's, that's huge. That, that's just big. Nobody, nobody donates that, this size of money. I mean, there's a check, you know, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, eighteen thousand, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars to a failing operation, so.
And there's, there's more from the eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, there's still about thirty thousand in that account that we will receive when they finish the, uh, close out the will, so.
Now we can get some better vehicles and, um, because our vehicles are at DEFCON five.
As of May fifth, the two new vehicles are at the outfitters, so they are being.
Good. They're being set up. That one truck, I, I'd just take that off, I'd get, just get rid of that thing, that thing's scary.
With the one we have replaced so far, but the other two will be in hopefully within the next month.
Okay.
That'll be off too, yeah.
Looking forward to seeing them.
Yep.
Bring them up here, drive them around.
Too well.
Okay, put them on the lot out front there. Okay, next up, uh, for these two, we have a request to two job title positions. We're changing the job titles. Um, this has nothing to do with money or anything, this is just the actual one forty-four, the job description. And we're changing, um, kennel supervisor to healthcare technician and then rescue event volunteer coordinator to healthcare technician. So those are the two requests that they're asking to be changed up here. Um, I don't have a problem with it, I'll make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to change the two job title positions as shown on the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
And truly, without good leadership out there, we wouldn't be getting these donations, new building or not. That helps, but we need you there, so thank you.
Very happy with it.
Thank you all. Next up, IT, Lee Childress, IT Department. First of all, we got a request to transfer funds. This is Fund One Thousand, general fund from account forty-five ten, data processing equipment to account thirty-one thirty, training and education in the amount of fourteen thousand. This will provide internet security and training. Hi, Lee.
Hi, I brought my bodyguard.
Yeah.
Up to this point, we've been focused mostly on security from the outside, so no terrorists attack us. And we're pretty confident that the equipments and policies we have in place are working well. That doesn't mean we're gonna stop focusing on that, but now we need to look internally to see what our weakest links are there. So this contract provides us service for training us and the employees and staff on, um, best practices on how to identify problematic emails, spam.
It's getting harder and harder.
It is, it really is, they're clever.
It's always changing. So that was gonna be my question, if we approve this, is this something that's going to be ongoing?
If you approve the budget, yes. Yeah, this one, this.
But Lee, don't you agree that it's.
I do agree, it should be, because like we had said, things change on how they cleverly create, yeah, exactly right. So this contract is for three years, um, but the amount is for this year's payment, they broke it into three annual payments.
Motion to approve.
Second, we have a motion and second, second on a request to transfer funds as noted on the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Next up, another transfer of funds, what's this for?
This is for furniture for my office. I have the office furniture that Susan Larson had when she was Senator Townsend's president.
I can agree to the whole office setup down there, it's.
Yeah, way over twenty years old. Um, the desk has to rest against the wall to stay standing, so my back faces the door. And, yeah, it's, and it's all, um, the veneer is chipped, so if you lean against it, you snag your clothes and it's just.
It's bad. It's bad.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to transfer funds for, uh, replacement of broken office furniture. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Next up, um, we have another, uh, transfer too, Lee, go ahead.
Yeah, this is for maintenance agreements. This is for ongoing maintenance agreements that have come up with contractors and such, as well as our DUO, which is our second authentication for people working remotely.
Yeah.
Those costs keep expanding, so just to cover that before the end of the year.
Or do you think we'll be out by the end of the year of people working from home and two, two factor?
I hope that, but as far as disaster recovery goes, like, we keep the prosecutor's office ongoing just in case something happens, we have to cover those costs.
Yeah.
There will always be costs.
Yeah. Okay, uh, we need a, uh, we need a motion on that one too. Second, we got a motion and a second on another request to transfer funds, uh, as noted on the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Next up, this is for NITCO and it's, looks like this has to do with nine-one-one.
Right, hence why I have Paige up here. Nine-one-one will foot this bill, but I'll, I'll explain the situation and that is currently the phone lines that service nine-one-one. The sliplines come into the Sheriff's Department and then straight to nine-one-one. Should any of that equipment fail or the line between the Sheriff's Department and nine-one-one fail, or we want to do any maintenance on those servers or equipment, they're out, they have an outage for telephones, which is not really good for nine-one-one.
No.
So what we're doing is we're creating another identical line of telephones into our building, which will then go to nine-one-one. It may actually be going right to nine-one-one.
I think it's going right.
Right to nine-one-one, so that we have redundant backup, so if one fails, the other one will carry right away.
Sort of surprised that one got missed.
Right?
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Second, we have a motion and a second on a contract to provide redundant telephone service to nine-one-one. This is to NITCO, it's a eight-hundred-and-six-dollar monthly fee, one-time install fee, ninety-nine dollars, which will be paid by nine-one-one. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries, thanks, Lee. Still need to get down there and see you. I, 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 I'll get there this week probably, stay private, don't go anywhere. Uh, Tracy? Buildings, facilities? I, I feel bad for Tracy, we met three weeks ago and that was the meeting where she had to tell me that everything was falling apart. So here we are today, um, our dump truck that does a lot of heavy lifting that we nabbed from the Expo Center, I think about five years ago. It finally, the hole underneath of the truck gave out. And so now we're trucked down, going into mowing season and everything else, so we were, we were eventually gonna get some vehicles, but because you couldn't buy vehicles the last couple of years, we couldn't get any, so we were just working with what we had. But this one here, it's, it's time. So, and I know you've spent a lot of time working with Scott and trying to figure out, uh, because they're at a premium too out there.
Yes, they are.
And so, I, but I was very surprised by the numbers that you did go out and get, so thank you.
Appreciate that, thanks.
But, uh, Mike, Scott, you want to just give a little?
I mean, this went through probably thirty different maturation before we were able to, I believe, both these are still available.
Yes, they are.
We also have to deal with that timing issue. Uh, but we were able to stay within the enterprise fleet management and they were able to procure these two vehicles that are outlined. Um, and then obviously that keeps us on the, and these are available at dealership.
Yes.
So these would be something that we would get sooner rather than later and then also have the, uh, but the budgetary ease or easier of dealing with a monthly vehicle payment as opposed to sixty or seventy thousand dollars a vehicle as a capital outlay, um, in one given year and this particular budget is a pretty rough, uh, way to go in May. So these two, I think, are, um, very good and I think we're kind of lucky that they're, they're out there at dealership and it's something that we need and we're able to go back to the enterprise fleet management, which I think has been working very well in other departments and, so. Uh, I think these are the two best options from a capital standpoint, a monthly, uh, monthly payment standpoint and, uh, puts them in a good position for, uh, several years.
Where, Tracy, where did we leave it, or where did we leave it with the dump trailer?
We actually, um, put some sides on one of our smaller trailers, so.
It's working.
We've decided that that is not, you know, as needed, um, as they originally had thought. I mean, they used the dump truck, you know, while we had it, but it wasn't as necessary, yeah. There will be, and it will be that much out here.
Options out there if we ever need it to, because they're pretty inexpensive and they do a lot of work.
And I think the dump trailer is a much more economical.
More economical and useful.
Yeah.
Flexible, so, yep. Throw it to the floor. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a request to lease a two thousand twenty-two Dodge Ram four-by-four crew cab in the amount of eleven oh seven thirteen a month and a two thousand Dodge Ram four-by-four regular cab in the amount of seven ninety-two ninety-seven a month. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Let's go buy, let's go get those, get the guys are going. Yeah, if they're still there, right, thank you, Tracy. And Tracy, thank you for, uh, the, the front of the building looks wonderful, thank you for jumping on that right away. You're doing a great job, by the way. Next up, Jim Flair, Highway Department. We got, uh, accepting new bids for liquid bituminous pertaining to chip and seal roads. Uh, the bids were opened at the, the bids will be open, oh, the bids will be opened on our next meeting, June seventh, two thousand twenty-two, right, Jim?
Correct, um, we thought we could, uh, try something a little different this year, since we have a known quantity that we're looking to buy, we think we may be able to get a little better price, so that's why we're looking to do it this way.
I've always wondered why we always opened our bids for oil-type products in the winter when.
Yeah, I think it's a little, see, you're playing the market no matter what.
Yeah.
You know, um, so hopefully this ends up in our favor, since now they're looking at and they're gonna almost sell us, you know, three hundred thousand gallons roughly of material, then we may be at a better price than what they were looking at before.
Worth a try.
Exactly.
Yep. Throw it to the floor. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept new bids for liquid bituminous pertaining to chip and seal roads for two thousand twenty-two. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
See you next week, in a couple of weeks, Jim, thank you. Nice shirts.
Styling.
Makes you look thinner. Development and Stormwater, Bob Thompson. Morning, Bob.
Good morning.
Mike? First of all, Michael, let's you do the intro.
Yeah, we, we talked about this at the Stormwater Meeting this morning, but we have better attendance at the Board of Commissioners meeting.
We always do.
We always do, more exciting stuff, I guess, than Stormwater. I wanted to introduce and let everybody know that David Champion, uh, has joined our staff as Assistant County Engineer. He's gonna run our development review program, so help me with all the private, uh, development review and inspection that we're responsible for. So come on up, David.
You're not getting off that easy, David. Pete, and the camera can now see you.
He relocated to Porter County, as, as evidence that folks want to move to Porter County, uh, David relocated his family from, uh, state of Maryland, uh, just, well, in the last month. And has just started with us, um, last week, so very glad to have David on staff. Uh, he's got a wealth of experience and, uh, knowledge that'll be a great asset for our staff and for the, for the county at large, so.
Welcome, again, yep, thank you. Okay, next up, we have the Preserve, which is a performance agreement and letter of credit for Phase Three.
Yes, so, uh, we are, uh, at the Preserve, Phase Three, they are nearing substantial completion of their public infrastructure, so roads and stormwater, as well as sanitary and water. Uh, at this point, they have submitted a performance agreement, uh, that basically states that they are, uh, warranting that they're gonna complete those, uh, improvements in a timely manner and have provided a letter of credit as financial guarantee in the amount of one hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars and forty cents, uh, which is the value of the remaining public improvements uh, that if they don't complete them, we have that letter of credit that we can draw upon, uh, to complete, uh, with our own forces. Uh, so staff is recommending that the board accept, uh, the letter of credit and approve the performance agreement this morning for the Preserve, Phase Three.
Any questions or comments to Mike?
Motion to approve.
Second, we have a motion and a second on a performance agreement and a letter of credit for Phase Three for the Preserve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next up, CCMG award for one million dollars.
Yes, uh, Indot has awarded, uh, Porter County one million dollars, that's a fifty-fifty match, so it was back in December, early December, when we were working all of this up, the applications were due in the very beginning of January. It was for two million dollars worth of projects, so we were awarded one million dollars.
But now.
But now.
Wait, there's more. But wait, there's more.
Yes, uh, we are requesting to go out for the sealed bids for the, um, project paving. Because of the oil prices, we are now predicting that the two million dollars of projects that we estimated are probably going to be over two-point-six million dollars, if not higher. We're looking at originally the costs for doing those roads and that they were milling and then coming back in and doing a structural surface on the roads. Was probably estimated at a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars per mile, roughly. It's ten-point-eight miles that we're looking at for this project that we were awarded on. The estimates we're throwing out now are probably looking at two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a mile.
I wonder how many projects statewide are gonna fail because, you know, these smaller communities do, will not have that additional money make up the difference.
True, some of the smaller communities, depending on populations, Indot does a seventy-five, twenty-five match with them.
But they do a lot of chip and seal too.
Right. Because of our size and the larger cities, I mean, Valparaiso, Chesterton, following this, they're at the fifty-fifty, but everybody's in this same situation. It is.
Six hundred grand, not like we just got a lot laying around someplace.
Right.
Shame, doesn't have to be that way. We don't have to accept this or anything, do we?
No, it's just.
It's just more of a notification. It's just more of a notification, letting us know it's coming up.
Right.
It's like we got to talk to the council.
Right.
So.
Okay.
Next up, we're seeking sealed bids for the CCMG grants that we just discussed. This is for County Line Road, 550 North, 400 East, 500 West, 500 East, 700 North, 900 South, Baum's Bridge Road, Tower Road, and 400 North. That's what made the list this year on a CCMG. And this has already been approved by the state.
Correct.
Okay. So motion, we need a motion-
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Tiki Seal bids for the CCMG 2022 paving projects as noted on the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And Bob, or whoever, when will likely to get started on these?
If we get the sealed bids going, I'm probably thinking we'll have an opening-
July.
In your July meeting is what we're looking at. And then probably looking at August, September.
But they will be completed this year? For their shipment?
Yes. Should be, yes.
Depending on how your conversation with the County Council.
Well, yes. Depending on the bid prices and conversations-
Yeah, there's, yeah.
County Council.
There's a few dozen more variables, but we're getting there.
Yeah. Right. Right.
Okay. Next up, we have some more exciting news. This is to announce the Marquette Trail, Phase 3 and 4, Next Level Trails Award. Bob?
We just recently found this out that our grant application for Next Level Trails and St. Marquette Trail, this is where we were going to be going from the Doom Park Train Station through to Beverly Shores and about where Lake County, or Lake Shore County Road is within Beverly Shores is at. I also call it, that's Brown Road, I think, 500 East. So about that location is where we were going to end with this. But we were awarded $4.9 million for Next Level Trails Grant on this.
So that decision by the commissioners to quickly flood some APR funds out of that to process and put toward these funds to qualify.
Correct.
Looks pretty smart. So it, so we put the 2.5 in, we have the 4.9, and then plus the monies that we clawed back from the federal funds that we received years ago.
Correct.
Right? I'd come up with right around 10 million. Is that 9, 10 million total?
Yeah. 2 million roughly on the west end, and it's probably going to be a little over 2 million on the very east end. And, and yes, this, so, yeah.
So we have about 9, 10 million that we haven't even put, you know, other than the 2.5, which is really ARPA money, but it's ours, I guess. So that's, that's, you know, and I'm thinking the trail's not going to be much more than that, I wouldn't think. I know we have some crossings and things, great crossings we have to do and stuff, but it's, this is exciting. I mean-
Unbehold, I got told that costs are going up on that one, too.
Well, of course they are.
So that's amazing, $4.9 million. So, yep. Good job.
Yep.
Thank you.
Will take you. And that's a state Next Level Trail Grant. That's state grants, so.
State, it's, yes, it's through GNR.
Okay. Next up, we have a request to vacate the right-of-way of Lumber Lane in Lake Eliza. We have a petitioner, Kim Marie Correles, and we're going to do our public hearing like we always do because we're talking to request vacate a right-of-way. This is going to be first reading, and that's when we have the public part of the, of this. So what we're going to do is we're going to pause the Commissioners' meeting, open up a public hearing, and we're going to give three opportunities for anybody to come forward to speak against, and three people to come forward to speak in favor. So the first call is anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this vacate of right-of-way. Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this vacating of right-of-way. Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this vacation of right-of-way. First call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this vacation of right-of-way. Second call, anybody coming forward to speak in favor of the vacation of this right-of-way. Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this right-of-way vacation. And with that, the public hearing is now closed, and we'll throw it to the Commissioners' floor to vote on for first reading.
Motion to approve the request to vacate right-of-way of Lumber Lane in Lake Eliza.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. This second reading will be on the next agenda on June 7th. And with that, we come to the end of our meeting.
We've got one more thing with ARPA funds for the trustees. Our original document made it a little difficult for them, so I'd like to amend our ARPA ordinance to allow to use the funds that we already provided for them for any allowed legal use of ARPA funds but revenue replacement.
Yep. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
So to be clear, we're not-
Not your money.
We're not changing the ARPA ordinance money. Same amount of money that was already appointed or approved to the trustees. The original version had it more tucked into one of Jim's committee's, the behavioral, I believe. This allows the trustees to utilize it for any legal use within the ERP guidelines, but for revenue replacement. And we, I believe the Commissioners got several requests from the trustees to allow that change to happen. But again, we're not changing, no other changes are being made except for the money that was already approved to the trustees to be utilized under the available ARPA categories. And I believe at that point in time, it was $500,000, split by population, for the trustees.
Population of township.
Excuse me. For their individual township.
Allows them to be a little more responsive to the needs in their individual communities.
The way it was written, it was tied pretty tight, and they couldn't really, you know? So this should cover that. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Is that it?
That's all I have.
Okay. And with that, this comes to the end of our agenda. Anybody wishing to address this board? Yep. Come on forward.
Hello. I'm Dawn Miller, Ella Fiermbappel. I have just a couple of questions. Commissioner Blaney, I see listed here on this agenda, the Memorial ARPA House. I had a few questions. Questions. I have been in, oh, I'm sorry. Have you been in recent discussions and meetings in Indy with an architect and have renderings? Second question. Since you told me the ARPA house was off the table, no ARPA money will be used, how will this project be funded? It has brought to my attention that you plan on using the money from the hospital sale. The original amount proposed was $5.5 million, and now the number is being reported at about $7 million.
I've not been to Indianapolis, but I have been on a Zoom meeting with our architects. And what was your next question?
Well, did you have the renderings? Did you, I didn't know if you answered it. I couldn't hear.
This was within the last week, and yes, we're starting to look at renderings, and we will push those out to the community as soon as possible.
So when you came to me and told me that the ARPA house is no longer on the table-
For ARPA funds.
That was just for ARPA funds. So we're going ahead to take money from a hospital fund?
The funding has not been determined, and I don't make that decision by myself. There's seven council members, two other commissioners, and we have some other ideas as well, and it's a work in progress.
I just think $7 million for a building-
We don't have our final number yet, but it wasn't seven.
It, well, okay.
It has increased like everything else.
Do you have any figure?